There we go.
Believe it is started.
Eric set it up. He asked me to turn it on. Cody, let's just make sure it was on.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to do an start is 7:01. This is a special meeting on EMS, on a restructuring option. So we're going to listen to the options. If you have any questions, comments, leave them in here. So, Ray, you want to come on up?
So if anybody wants a copy of the restructuring options, I think they're over there by Sherry. I'm going to pass them around. That's basically what we're going to go over this evening. So within this document, as an EMS department, we came up with basically three options to help sustain our department. As most of you know, EMS is a volunteer slash part-time service right now, and we have been ever since the day we were started in Bird City. As most of you know, the volunteer world is dwindling throughout the nation, and it's becoming a big thing, especially for the rural communities. And as EMS, we feel that also. And we have a responsibility with the state to provide a 24/7, 365 ambulance service within the county. We don't have to provide it in each town individually. We just by the state statute, since the county is being, taxing the taxpayers for the service, we have to provide that service to the county. So what that requires us to do as far as staffing levels, or minimum staffing levels, is we have to have at least two people on call 24/7, 365, because our ambulance, the staffing requirements are there has to be two technicians on that ambulance to transfer a patient to the hospital. So that's a state requirement, and that's the absolute minimum that we have to provide to the county residents. I'm going to make an assumption that probably most of you would like a little bit more service out of your ambulance service than that, that you wouldn't feel comfortable with that one ambulance being tied up and no additional staff to answer the second call, no additional staff to do transfers out of the county, which we usually end up going to Hayes, Denver, Carney, are kind of most popular. Providing that service solely out of a station here in St. Francis, or providing that service solely out of a station in Bird City, the delay in care and the delay in treatment and transport is pretty large. So in looking at all of our options, we came up, like I said, with these. Of course, there is a price attached to each one, and a fairly large price, and we're aware of that. And as a community, we need to, we need to decide what we're going to do with our EMS service. So that's kind of what the meeting is about tonight. Did I, anybody else want to chime in?
What's the different options that you have? It says there's different options. Why don't you go through the options?
And that's what we'll do now. So Option A, they're basically ranked from least expensive to most expensive. Option A says it provides the maximum utilization of both volunteers and full-time staff. So the option includes the addition of what we've termed non-traditional staff, including full-time physicians that are on-call only. And I'll explain that in a little bit. These full-time positions will be required to be on-call minimum of 60 hours a week, with a trade-off that they will not have traditional office hours. And then, these positions have to be within five minutes of an ambulance to respond per state requirement. This option also includes the addition of the administrative assistant position, which is non-certified. One of the things, as you guys probably know, we had an investigation within some of the staff of EMS, and one of the things that came out of that investigative report is that there, the assumption that there needs to be somebody in the EMS office, eight to five, Monday through Friday, to handle administrative calls. We don't staff that way today. We staff so that we can roll ambulances and not answer administrative phone calls. So we did add that position in here. In fact, something that the board of commissioners is interested in pursuing. So, the inputs on the St. Francis side, now this is assuming that we want to staff both the St. Francis and Bird City emergency building with ambulances and staff. I have a personal feeling there that I think as county taxpayers, that would sure have my vote. But that, like I said, is not a state requirement. That can be trimmed back however the county would like. So for the assumption of all of these options, it is staffing both departments for both locations with at least staff to roll one ambulance. So to do that, our biggest problem with our volunteers is weekends in St. Francis. So we've provided two full-time equivalent positions at $32,000 a year each, to be on-call weekends, which would be 6:00 PM Friday to 6:00 AM Monday. That's going to guarantee an ambulance service for the weekends. And like I said, I also have the administrative assistant over here, Monday through Friday. Bird City's, their needs are a little bit different. They need more people on the weekdays than they do the weekends. Weekends are easier for them to cover than the weekdays. So we feel like we can do that with one and a half full-time people, again, for $32,000 a year, or $48,000 a year. That brings a total to $135,920 per year, and that's all additional staffing. So that's basically option A. And non-traditional, just so that everyone understands it, because it is a little bit different than the normal working world. These people, we were going to call them weekend warriors, that are going to be on-call, have their radio beside them, they are, they can go amongst themselves out in the community in their homes. They don't have to be at the station. So it is, it is very non-traditional that they don't have office hours. But they also cover calls 60 hours a week. So instead of having a 40-hour-a-week work job in the office, they're having a 60-hour a week on-call-only job. For the right person in the right circumstance in their, in their life, this would be probably a very good option. Some other people, you know, it wouldn't be. Cody, go ahead. Yeah, they have to be within five minutes. So there will be, the residency requirement, as long as they can make the five-minute response time work, there really isn't a residency requirement. Now, we get into another issue that I ran into over in Rowan's County. If, for instance, where we have to bring people in from the outside, then we have the housing issue. So over there, we had to modify the emergency building quite a bit to provide living quarters and all that. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to do that. Go ahead. Okay, so for EMS, we have myself as a director, and then we have 36 hours of part-time helping.
So you're the only full-time worker?
Yes. Now, we do have two grant-funded positions that are full-time, with the addition of at least probably one, one and a half more in the future. They, they are supervised by me on the EMS side, so they are up here also. One of them is an EMT, and then currently, and one of them is an RN that's not an EMT. But as far as just EMS, we're what? I don't know if that would be 1.8 or 9, something like that. Yes?
How many volunteer EMTs do you have right now?
I'm going to say 18, probably.
18?
Yes.
And then do you schedule them? Like, you're on-call for the next eight hours. If there's a run, you come, you do the run, and then somebody for the next, or?
Yeah, so they work 12-hour shifts.
But you have a schedule.
We have to, and that's one of the things that has changed over the years. When I started in EMS, we didn't have to have a schedule. So it was like the fire department operates now. We all get a radio. We go all amongst our daily lives, and when the page goes out, we all show up and we go. The state now requires us to have that schedule to assure 100% coverage.
Well, my granddaughter was an EMT a few years back, and she was on the schedule, and she got, when she was on-call, it was like 50 cents an hour. And then if she made a run, it was whatever she got for the run.
Yes, and that's how we still do it today. It's still the 50 cents an hour, and it's asking a lot to take people, let's say on a Saturday, for 12 hours out of your Saturday, you really can't go anywhere but your house. You get to miss your holidays and your birthdays and all that for $6. And that's what's, that's what's tough about this deal.
But when you make the decision to do that, you take that all into consideration, just like any other job, like if I was a nurse at the village for how many years. I didn't always have my Saturdays and Sundays.
But you were getting paid for it.
Right, I was getting paid, but I was on duty. Now, if I was on-call, I wouldn't have got paid, right?
And that's where we are, where we are today.
But these are volunteers, that most of it have full-time jobs, in addition to what they're doing here. Could you expand on the on-call pay, this is a little more involved, and it's just 50 cents an hour, correct?
It's 50 cents an hour, yes. And then you get per-run or per-transfer pay.
Well, I specifically, because you have difficulty filling that position, and then at that point, there's shift bidding, correct?
Oh, okay, yeah.
I feel like that's important for people to understand that more of it.
Okay, so if we, if we can't fill our schedule, we go out and we offer what's called a shift bid, which is pretty popular in the nursing world, where people can bid on a price that they will cover that shift for. So, for instance, at 50 cents an hour, I might have something scheduled on, you know, Monday night, and Monday night needs coverage. Well, at 50 cents an hour, I'm not willing to change my plans. But at $5 an hour, $10 an hour, whatever that may be, I might rearrange my life, or if I'm working that other full-time job, take a vacation day to pick up that shift. So there is an incentive, then at that point, to fill that shift.
Does all these people have full-time jobs, all these volunteers?
Yes, and that's the big thing, is that when we started, we were not, now everybody has a full-time job.
And we have people in this room that took, what, $4,500 of on-call, or $4,500 hours of on-call time last year. That's two more full-time job equivalents. I mean, it's a huge demand for some of them. And most of them are the Bird City group, because their numbers are just so low. And we know, long-term, historically, how you solve this problem, is you get more EMS and more EMTs. And our problem right now is we don't have a certified instructor on staff. That's, that's one of our biggest problems.
Are you having trouble filling position out of 18 volunteers, or you have trouble filling all positions, or covering, covering on time?
Like I said, for over here, it's weekends, and for over there, it's weekdays that we have our most trouble.
We might have 18 volunteers, but they don't all live here. They're off to college.
Yeah, we got, what, three that are, that don't live local. And then, you know, just like anything, there's probably really closer to half that are active. But we do have 18 in our roster, real close to that.
Am I missing a vote? Is this a volunteer? And when they volunteer, they know what they're volunteering for? So what's the problem with, with the volunteer service? You know, these people know that they might give up weekends, or whatever, in order to do the job.
Not necessarily. As volunteerism has dropped off, it's put a lot bigger demand on the ones that are left.
What about if you offer, instead of 50 cents an hour, an hour and a half, or something, or, I mean, a dollar and a half, $2, or something like that?
We look at that. The impact to the county is, in my opinion, a lot larger than the impact to the volunteer, if that makes sense. The cost to the county is very high, even just to raise it a dollar. And I've asked staff, does it make any difference?
And then you said we have, like, a couple full-time people here, five days a week, or how's that scheduled?
It's scheduled as needed. So I'm full-time, so that means I'm the director, so I have what's called last call. Anybody that, any hole in the schedule, I try to fill first. And if I can't find it, then we go out and do shift bidding. So, yeah, I, what did I add up my hours? It was like 51 hours a week last year, or something like that.
What is the difference in the operating of the ambulance now, as of, say, two, three years ago, which was volunteer?
I don't know if I followed you on that.
What was, what was the cost to run the ambulance five years ago versus what it is today?
And who was the staff? Who was the administrator? Who arranged for the people on-call, or?
Five years ago?
Well, say, three years ago.
Janelle Bowers was the director before me, and then before that was Larry Huedel.
And was Janelle the only administrator here, and she did the scheduling and?
Yep, yep.
But she did not get coffee.
And we had more, and we had more active volunteers than.
And we're providing only basic last call.
I think it's important, being on the rule of the task force, that, as I understand this, those grant positions, to kind of explain what they do, because even though they're here, they're kind of out of the equation, as far as I don't want call and stuff. And I don't want to muddy the waters of people thinking, you know, hey, you got two people on grant, why don't you count them? Or, I think, you know, really explaining that a little bit.
Okay, so the two, the two grant-funded positions that are full-time and are in the office, their, their job is to provide some, what we felt, chronic care management to basically our geriatric population as a pilot program in the state, trying to keep hospital readmissions down, trying to keep people in their homes longer, and trying to reduce the overall healthcare cost. It's a pilot project, and for the funders to get back data to see if this might be a promising model that other communities across the nation can adopt.
These grants that they have, are we matching any of the funds?
No, these are not matching grants. Well, no, I take that back. In the grant, it is specified that there is a local-county match. However, for the last two years, we haven't asked for that, because we haven't needed it. And there's only one more year left on the grant. And I think that figure was roughly, I wish Carol was here, $30,000 or $35,000 a year, and we haven't asked for that money, because we haven't needed it left, and been able to keep our costs down, so.
You're doing way more transfers now than in the past.
Yes, transfers, transfers is where EMS makes the most money, because we charge by the mile. And I think last year, we were in the 70s, and the year before that, we were down in the 20s.
You mean $70,000?
Seventy, basically.
Seventy, transfers, okay. What was the dollar?
Dollars, we won't know dollars until the end of this year.
Usually, I think around $2,000, aren't they?
We usually bill, you know, roughly $2,000. The return, it all depends on the insurance company.
The transfers have been big.
Yeah, transfers. But it takes personnel, and it takes work and care.
Explain why those transfers have gone up. What were we able to do to be, to be able to take more transfers? I think that's important.
So to be able to take more transfers, I mean, what we really did is motivate the staff to do it. We talked about it as a group, and how it benefits the county, and how it can bring more money back into the county to offset some costs. So that, that was the biggest thing with it. Before, we were outsourcing those to Mainland Goodland. So that money would stay in Sherman County and provide.
Or we were flying the patient out.
Or we were flying the patient out. One of the other goals of the pilot project is we identified a quarter million dollars, and I think it was either 2013 or 2014, of savings we could give to Medicare if we were taking these patients by ground instead of by air, when, when air wasn't necessary, if we would have had a advanced level of EMS, and the people around available to.
Well, and insurance companies were refusing to pay for the flight because it wasn't medically necessary.
I just want to ask about those transfers again. You say it went from 20 to 70, and so, and I think he said it was about $2,000 a transfer, is what, just a ballpark, right? These are ballpark numbers, so that's $140,000. That's additional revenue that you don't count on, right?
No, I mean, we don't.
So that's, that's just additional revenue that you're making by doing the transfers?
Correct. Of course, you're going to have some expense out of that, too.
Right, right, right. But I'm saying, could these options that you offered, is it foreseen that you're going to be able to do more transfers with this to help offset these costs? Is that, would this, these plans give you more time to do transfers, thus increasing those, thus increasing the revenue again, to help offset the costs?
Yes, on paper, on paper, it would show that. For instance, this year, we've had a hospital that's real slow. Guess what EMS is? We're slow too. So, you know, what, how we end with transfers this year is going to be really interesting. We're really down for the first quarter, so.
So the transfers, you're saying that the transfers affect the quality of our ambulance service locals?
The level, the level of service that we provide, for instance, on some of our transfers, we're able to take a nurse, at a nurse level on our transfers, because we have enough staffing to do it, as opposed to not have a nurse.
Yeah, we need just local ambulance runs. Does this transfer affect your ambulance runs?
Affect them, no. We, we have to keep a crew in, in the county at all times. So the only way we can say yes to a transfer is if we have other volunteers step up and say, yeah, I can leave my job, or yell.
So you got, you got a problem with enough volunteers, and then you turn around and do a lot of transfers, which calls for volunteers. Something I add up.
Well, the full-time positions would eliminate that.
Yeah.
Well, we've got, they're stepping up, that's the thing.
May I ask two questions?
Uh-huh.
Are transfers mandated by state law, or is that an option that you?
It's an option.
Okay. And then going back to, I know there's been questions about the current scheme in place to help pay for the volunteer, and there was a discussion about the 50 cent on-call time and the shift bidding. How often are you able to fill the on-call positions without having to go to shift bidding, and is that a consideration in the department's budget?
So I'm going to turn around and look at staff for that, because I don't know that off. How, how many times do you think I have to come for shift bids, on an average? I mean, is there two?
Three, four times a month, maybe?
Three?
Obviously, last month, you were out more because you had sick kiddos.
Right, last month was a $10,000 month.
But on the other hand, then again, they all need to understand we are a volunteer service, and because we're a volunteer service, when we signed up, our volunteer service said we had to give this service to the community for two years. I've been an EMT for 15, so has Tammy and Wendy. I mean, and, and so, actually, our volunteer service is people that are going above and beyond what you want. And so, and we do this for 50 cents an hour. And when I first started, and I know with these two too, I did it 24/7 for three years, because I didn't have another job. Well, everybody's economy comes to the point where everybody has a full-time job anymore, or they did it when they're single and now they end up paying money. It changes everybody's perspective, that everybody does it for the two years that they're obligated to do it.
So as far as, I think your other question was on the budget for that?
Right, because ultimately, I mean, it's kind of hard for you to exactly know where you're going to end up, month by month.
Right, right.
Are you going to be able to fill the on-call positions with 50 cent, or are you going to go into the shift bidding and where you're going to end up, number-wise?
Right, right.
That is just sort of, just like, depending on the transfers, it's a very inconsistent number, but it's going to change from week to week, month to month.
And so far, our shift bid hasn't been detrimental to our budget. I mean, at least in 2015. When we had to do the, the additional pay to cover me in the month of March, to let me have the time off, I mean, that, that's going to impact the budget, but.
How often have we had to go elsewhere to get help?
You mean, like, to a surrounding?
Well, you're, did somebody come in and do the call, or something?
So far, we haven't had to do that. We've been very fortunate. Like, some people have alluded to in March, I took off three weeks for my kids that were having surgery, so that took me off of the on-call. I thought there was no way we could do it locally. And again, I mean, the volunteers stepped up, and they covered 100% of it.
Now, when you get a call, it goes to the dispatcher, and the dispatcher forwards it to you, or how?
It's, it's a radio system.
Right, and they ask for responders?
And then the people that are on-call can say in the radio that they're responding, and then they come up here and they get an ambulance to go. And then they come up here and they get an interview to go.
Have you ever missed on being able to take care of a patient?
No. What was the total dollars that EMS took in last year? Gross dollars that EMS brought in last year?
I have that figure. Ambulance runs was a hundred and six thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-four cents. Ambulance transfers, this figure is dumb because there was a problem in billing. Ambulance transfers last year, thirteen thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-seven cents. These figures are right out of the computerized system.
So basically, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is what they, they brought in.
That's correct. That's what the department brought in.
And how much is net? Do you know, can you tell me what net it would be?
Well, this would be the net coming in.
All right.
I don't know what the gross was for billing. You, you would have to.
I can get that.
But what Medicare pays, what eighty percent?
Oh, no, less than that. We're in the sixties.
So the gross dollar amount doesn't really mean anything. What means is what if that treasurer's putting back into, into our account?
And the thing that's tough about those numbers is the treasurer's office is on cash-based reporting. Up here, I keep another duplicate set of books, so it's accrual. So for instance, a hundred and six thousand dollars of ambulance runs, yes, is what was deposited. But we have to figure, we were also on a Medicare hold during that time. We just deposited fifty-three thousand dollars within this month that was actually runs back last year. So it's really, it's really hard to look at it year by year. It's a lot better to look at an average because of things like this. I mean, we're, you know, Scott probably knows, we, we closed on a two thousand and eight account, account the other day. I mean, you know, now we can credit that back to two thousand and eight.
Whenever you have a run, you can charge part of it to Medicare?
Yeah.
Cause they're Medicare.
Medicare. Yeah, if they qualify for Medicare.
So it's the older?
Right. Most, most likely, it's gonna be the older generation. And if they have a Medicare supplemental policy, which what I see, I would say probably eighty to ninety percent of our Medicare folks have a supplemental policy. Then that pays the bill and the patient usually doesn't owe anything. And we write the rest of it off. Right.
That's if you are a Medicare patient. If you're Medicaid, the reimbursement is even lower. And you gotta take into consideration, it may be those accounts that are private pay. They may not attach insurance. You may have billed it, but until they pay, that money's not gonna show up in the revenue.
And there's a lot you never collect.
Right.
You gotta take that into consideration.
Is your, is ambulance the same way with your regular medical? They pay, insurance usually pays eighty percent of the allowance charge?
It, it, yes, I'm gonna say yes to that. But the eighty percent, you, you can't throw that out because every insurance is gonna be different.
Yeah.
But yeah, they, they usually pay a percentage.
Say you charged two thousand dollars for this particular run. And say the insurance is, okay, that run's only worth fifteen hundred.
Right.
And then they pay eight, only eighty percent of that for your secondary to pick up what was left.
Correct.
So basically, lose your ass.
It doesn't matter what we set our prices at. We can set our prices wherever, I mean, it doesn't matter. Who it affects are the people that don't have insurance. And that's, that's how you gotta keep.
What I'm starting to see is very shortly, I'm gonna be on fixed income, both me and the wife. Taxes are high enough. How, how many more mills are we talking about this going up? And this grant, when it's over with, is it gonna just disappear? And the people that's been hired for that, they go back to whatever it is that they were doing before? Or is the county gonna pick it up and keep it? And if they do that, that's more mill levy.
And that, that's why it's important to have these conversations. I mean, they're only doing, they're only being representative of the people. But no, that's a very valid point.
I think we need to keep what we got and say to hell with the rest of it.
That's easy to say, but if you don't have. I mean, if you call nine-one-one and you want an ambulance and if we keep what we have and we have to do it by the people that are volunteer, what happens if nobody shows up to pick you up?
Well, I guess I die.
Well, who are you getting back?
Part of the community.
But we have to provide an ambulance service and a legal ambulance service if we're getting taxed for it.
And look, if they raise the mill levy to pay for a damn pool and we're mentioning about an ambulance service, mill levy doing up.
We'll mention about the pool too. Why don't we let him get through the options?
I think now we're at the two hundred phone position.
The rest of the options, I think, are a little bit.
And we hope you do that, just so, because I know there's a lot of discussion about what's the cost of mill levy. To be clear, your options do not include benefit packages for those employees?
No, salary.
Okay, just wanna make sure that's clear and go through with these.
Option B, less cost effective but more traditional. So they will be in the office for their scheduled shifts, not just on-call like option A. It also provides some relief for the volunteers. Three volunteer shifts will be covered by the additional personnel per week. This would eliminate three of our current part-time positions because they will be replaced with full-time positions. Again, the administrative assistant. So to do that, it would be three, it would, it would take three full-time equivalents primarily on the weekends. Why I said primarily is those three volunteer shifts would be during the week that it would be covered. Why it takes more people to do traditional staffing is now we're forty hours a week instead of our sixty hours. In Bird City, that's where it really goes up because to cover their weekdays, which remember is five days instead of just two, it would also require three full-time equivalents over there to cover the weekdays. Again, there's some, a little bit of savings there because of the three part-time positions. So the total cost comes up right under two hundred thousand dollars to do that. So it's basically taking the same concept and saying they have to work in the office instead of just being on-call. Option C, yes.
Sorry. When option B, you have to provide, or they have to pay?
Um, no. If, if, if they find local housing, no.
And if they can't, you have to provide, pass that to your government?
We don't, we don't have to provide them with that. But to hire them, yeah, we would have to do something. You know, and we had that problem because all of our people over in Applewood came in from out of town and there wasn't local housing. They, they physically couldn't find local housing, so.
I know I'm running out of questions. So would your plan be to find some housing off there? Clearing out or would you offer?
You know, I.
I'm not going back on.
Option A, you're saying?
Yeah, I don't agree with that.
Well, it, it all depends, it all depends on the applicant. If the applicant is from Goodland, let's say for instance, well, we have to talk about that. If the applicant is from St. Francis, we, we have that covered already.
Cause I, you know, it's just gonna change the financial part of option A.
Well, it might mean that they wouldn't be a candidate for this position. You know, it's, it's not like we, we would be forced to provide housing. We wouldn't be forced. Now, where we are kind of forced is if we can't find anybody locally to do it and we have to go outside, we have to talk about that. Is that a condition of employment or not? Yes, go ahead.
Just put the bird city.
Sure, are you?
Full-time people. And is that what try and find a volunteer? Maybe you do, I don't know.
So, so our problem is education.
Well, can, is there a class you can provide?
Right. We, we don't have a certified instructor right now to teach it. Part of this restructuring is for me to become that physician. Get me off a call and then I'll be the instructor. And that's really how to solve, how to solve that crisis.
Would you bring in an instructor yet?
Yeah, we have checked into that. Very, very limited availability is our biggest issue. And cost is really high.
Well, to be able to have a class, you have to have people who want to take it?
Yeah, because the instructor's not fun if they're just a couple. Where if we have a local instructor that's already employed by EMS, our requirements to have that class, I assume, would be a lot less. I, right now, I'd have a class with two people if I was a instructor. Because the right two people, and we've seen this time and time again, can make a huge impact. The wrong ten people, no impact at all.
If you have to go out of the community to get help, is like Goodland got an open abundance of help that you could bring in? Or Atwood, I mean, they gotta have the extra help they order to bring it in?
Atwood has nothing, because I, I used to work over there. And it was pulling teeth to get Atwood covered. So I know they have nothing to offer. I have heard that Yuma County, Colorado, there's some excess EMTs over there. And that's probably where we would go and then see how we could help them get Kansas certified.
How hard is it to get them certified?
To get them certified? It depends on, on the state they come from, but Colorado's not usually too bad.
They have to test?
Yes. If they're not national registry certified, they would have to test, the Kansas test. Yes?
So just so everybody knows, the education that we're talking about is just not one, two, three days education for us to become EMTs. We're talking an extended amount of time, six months, eight-hour days. And that's, if you have a full-time job, a lot of times you can't make those classes to travel outside of our community to attend those classes.
And we have had some people that did go to Good, Goodland to take the class.
Goodland's eight months.
But their course is eight months long. So that takes away our farming population. Because we try to offer those classes at times that farmers can attend. Well, eight months, you can't, I mean, an eight-month period here in the calendar of your community that covers our farmers. So that's one of the problems with Goodland. The other one is you're getting home at twelve-thirty in the morning.
It's, it used to be those classes were like a few minutes.
Right. They used to be less duration. They used to be. We used to only have to write a sentence when we documented too, a couple of years ago. And now we're writing pages. The requirements from the state for the EMS service has just gone up, up, up. And the service is a lot different than it was down here. You'll all be the first ones to admit. Yes?
So going to the, getting different, you know, classes were longer, or longer now, or back then. But medical, everything medical still changes from one month to another. So granted, it's gonna be longer than it was even last year or five years ago, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And the other thing is too, the last time we taught an EMR class, we had eighteen people that told us they wanted to take the class and sign up and everything. But after the first introduction, it's vibrant. Nobody realized the commitment it is to do it.
Five over the course of. Right, now we have three.
What about recertification hours? What does the big recertification hours now?
Uh, just depends on your level. What are we, I know I'm forty.
EMTs are from twenty-eight to forty. And EMRs, I think, twenty-four, yeah, twenty-four to twenty-eight. And that's recert hours. You get them over a two-year period, but you still have to cut out a chunk of your time. Not only if you work all day and then you're on-call all night. Now you have to do a class for two or three hours. I mean, it's just, it's a, I don't think people always understand the huge commitment that we have. And yes, we are a volunteer service. And yes, we signed on for this. But would you, how many people in this room would do all this work as a volunteer?
Oh, I'm gonna pick on Wendy for a minute. Wendy signed up to help her community in Bird City. She didn't sign up for forty, two-hundred hours worth of call every year. I mean, that's what she signed up for, is just to help her community, so.
I grabbed you out the other night. We said that she spent fifty-two percent of her life.
Yeah, fifty-two percent of her breathing hours, she was on-call for EMS. I mean, I mean, is that expected of a volunteer when they sign up for the job? I don't know, if so, I, I don't think we're gonna have hardly any of them left. We might have Wendy. And God bless her for doing it, because she cares about our community. But okay, I'll go to option C now. Option C provides traditional full-time staffing in both Bird City and St. Francis locations. Volunteers will be utilized to provide backup coverage, second call coverage, and transfer coverage. All part-time positions will be eliminated. This, this is the option that we did over in Applewood when, when I was the director over there. Includes the addition of the administrative assistant. So I know from over there, it takes seven full-time people to get a station covered. So if you want both stations covered with full-time people, that's seven, seven. That's fourteen full-time people plus an administrative assistant. That does eliminate three part-time positions. I'm guessing, I don't have any numbers other than an educated guess, that that would eliminate eighty percent of our current volunteer pay. And so that would cost an additional three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So that's your traditional full-time EMS service. What I think it would take to run that.
How many counties, other than Rollins County, and our Northwest counties are on like option C?
Goodland is, they, Goodland actually does more of an option B because they still have volunteer or part-time staff that they can utilize for their transfer services and some of those other things. But Rollins County, I didn't have that. We didn't have anybody local over there. Which is just the most expensive way to provide an EMS service with the lowest. It wasn't the lowest quality of care, the quality was good. But at any one point in time, we can only answer one call. If there was another call, there was only two people that can pay it over there to run, to run that thing. And I think we're really fortunate over here to be able to do it with volunteers. I would say ninety percent of the time, this county can mobilize four ambulances on-call. That rivals Sherman County and Colbyville both. And we're doing it with volunteers. I mean, it.
So if you have full-time staff, how much amount are you paying?
The thirty-two thousand, about fifteen dollars an hour, I think, is what the fifteen to sixteen is what we were paying over there. And that was attractive enough in the region to get people to come to the county.
And they moved in? I mean, there weren't local people, they?
There were, no. All of them, all of them except the one, and since I left that one, a lot of the persons moved on. And they were commuting, all of them were commuting. So they'd come in, their shift would start, say six o'clock in the morning. They would work six o'clock in the evening, go home. The shift that worked six o'clock in the evening and six o'clock in the morning would have to be split.
I ain't even sure that the aides that start out to the village get fifteen dollars an hour. I'm not sure to hope.
No, and we also administer med. And there's a lot of difference in scope between the aides and that and the EMS.
But they either have med aides up there too.
But that has.
They're not running codes.
They're passing.
You could ask, yeah, you could.
Exorcating people from cars and running codes and saving lives.
And that's where EMS has really changed over the years. I mean, our scope is so much different. Yeah.
At the aim, yeah, I mean, listen to that. But I don't do as much as aides.
But I don't do as much as aides that I know that are also EMTs. So granted, they should make more as an aide than me as an aide. I mean, correct. That's just my opinion. I'm an aide.
That's what they pay people at State and Shake.
Yeah, yeah. You don't even get to. Just for the record, I didn't bring it up, Scott. Only as an aide, I may or may not, State and Shake employees may or may not make more than I do. So yeah, our EMTs should make more than I do and they should even make more than State and Shake.
Although I'd like to throw to Cody here because I, I'm new to your guys' community. I came in here this December, so I think I have a unique perspective. And the reality is, we're public servants, we're governments. And I'm paying everyone with your taxes. And the reality is, everybody in multiple departments are not being fairly paid because we're not State and Shake. We're not a private enterprise that's looking at totally generating revenue. And I could tell you, you know, basically when I'm getting paid for a part-time position, it's not part-time. And I'm getting underpaid, but I do it because I'm a public servant. And I know when I look at the resources available, for instance, to the sheriff's office and the underfunding there, they're underpaid. So the service being done here is important, I think. People are performing an important service, but when we start talking about fairness and money available, I think that's a problem over the fall when you're looking at your public servants in the county. And I will tell you, coming in from an outsider and seeing the type of people you have in your community, serving your community and really upholding medicine as a public service, they are all making great sacrifices to get the job done and being unpaid. But that's across the board. That's not just the EMS department. That's, I think, a lot of the different departments doing emergency services are facing the same problem because ultimately there's a limited amount of money to spread our, and Cody could probably share a decent, sorry, I work with him too much. Come on by, it's worth saying, could probably speak about that a little bit.
I can tell you, you went through a six-month period of understaff. And a lot of applicants that applied for a deputy job, they were told how much to pay, rescinded their application. Our deputies right now, the top end of the deputy is about fifteen dollars an hour. That's about the top of the line when they start a lot lower than that. Now granted, when you hire somebody for that little money, you're going to want two things. Either you need somebody that you end up six months and want to get rid of because they're not being the job. Or you're going to need somebody that's very unique minded that just wants to do the job and doesn't matter how much it pays. If you're lucky, you get the second. If you're unlucky, you get option N. And one of the things I can tell people is, well, we pay, it gets about fifteen thousand dollars to send somebody to KLA DC to become a deputy. And we pay as a taxpayer fifteen thousand dollars to go train a deputy. They're down there for three months. They come here and work and in six months, they're gone. And the community says, well, why, you know? Why do we go out? It doesn't take a rocket scientist to say, you came to that, went to KLA DC, you met guys that you were going to school with, because every law firm, office in the state is down there. You find out you're getting thirteen, twenty-five an hour and your buddy who's walking next to you is getting seventeen, fifty an hour where he's at. So you get home, you fulfill your contract and you put your job application out there to go earn seventeen dollars an hour instead of thirteen dollars an hour. And we'll finally get to the point where with, with Ms. Self, we're battling that and we're looking to have some law curbs retention. But when you talk about emergency workers, no matter what my belief is, whether it's option A, B, or C, or whatever option it is, I think would be best, which I, in my opinion, doesn't matter because I'm not going to invest. At the crux of it, you have to pay those technicians. If you're going to have full-time technicians, you, you better pay them close to the state average otherwise you're going to sink. You might think you're saving money by not paying them, but once you see their education in it and their training in it and all that time, they're going to be gone for three or four years as soon as you get done with that. And you're just going to have, you're going to have staff of undertrained people because they're just starting out, they're always rookies. They're always making, I'm saying people make more than states, but they're going to make more human states. You're going to be dealing with that. Well, if you want emergency service, you want that crusty old sergeant, you want that crusty old chief, you want that crusty old EMT that's been there for fifteen years, knows the county, knows the backwards, knows the people, knows what they're doing, can start an IV in the back of an ambulance at ninety miles an hour. That's what you want and if you get that, if you want that, you're going to have to pay for it. Like I said, that's not my opinion of which option I think is best. That's just straight out saying if you're hiring emergency workers, you better pay for your guys while I have them.
And it's kind of like Nicole pointed out, these numbers have nothing to do with benefits. So when you start talking like option C, when it's fourteen people, well, take that fourteen people times about eighteen thousand dollars extra a year. And, you know, so benefits does that up where with the volunteer service, the only benefits you're paying is my benefits. So that, that does have a big impact.
Agree?
Yeah.
I have the benefits here for all the options.
Oh, okay. So yeah, Rodney came up with, that takes option C up to seven hundred thousand dollars.
I want, I want to point out, I guess, when you're sitting there talking the, the full-time service and everything, and you say, well, we have the ability to roll four ambulances at once. And there might be some people in here that say, when would you ever do that? I have been on scene when we needed four ambulances. If this would happen, some of the motor vehicle accidents we've had over here, if it would happen in Atwood, they will stuff as many of the critical patients, they'll throw them on the floor. I mean, they're going to, I mean, they don't have enough equipment. They've got two people. If you've got four patients, you're going to take the most critical ones, leave the others behind and say, well, you'll be on the next bus trip. I mean, it's.
And what happens when there's four criticals?
Right.
Then you make really tough decisions.
You can't give in to patient care they need. And that's what we're actually talking about here is we're talking patient care. Patient care is number one. Doesn't matter how many ambulances we send out, doesn't matter anything. But if we don't provide patient care and we don't provide it to the utmost quality that we can do it, you know what, you guys are going to come back and pick us. You are going to be, we're going to be in the newspaper all over again because we did not do.
So on a simple EMS run, how many people does it take to like run?
Minimum of two. We have to have, we tried about three.
For instance, if there's a code, I've read it, there's a code that you guys are having the code all the way over here. How many people would you want on that ambulance?
I would say four.
Four? You have to. Yeah, it's two people. One's driving.
I try. Give you three in the car.
So my whole, like, point of that is, we want to have these people because I know if me or anyone in my family or I code, I'd rather have them have four people in the ambulance than say two because I want the best hand for my family and all of you guys to live. I mean, isn't that how most people feel? It may cost a little bit more, but, and granted, it is volunteer services, but it likes.
And let's.
More than a little bit more money.
Let's face it, when we talk about, I mean, historically, we've talked about EMS as a volunteer service. And we still refer to ourselves as that and it really, it really bugs me because it's part-time. That's what it is. These people are getting paid. To me, a volunteer, they don't get paid anymore. They volunteer their time. We do get paid. It may not be a minimum wage on call or anything like that, but there is, there is a payment going out. So I consider it a part-time service.
Ultimately, it's the taxpayer's care on the decision. It doesn't count as a. But I'm curious, what do volunteers feel about the question? Are we wanting them to go to a paid service if they're setting them in there and just want to go to work as a paid EMT? Do they want to keep it? What were the options made? I mean, what's, what's the consensus?
When we discussed it, and anybody can chime in, but we, we came up with option A. The rest of these options, I bet. Because they wanted to do it, I mean, the best, to me, the best staff is a hybrid staff of a mix of full-time and part-time people.
But I have to add that we added to that options because it does put into perspective.
Well, if you, if you want to outsource your EMS department, it puts into perspective what the ultimate thing to offer is everybody who's.
Well, as of that, actually, I think Commissioner Smith.